Hey Troy.
I'd like to call the regular board meeting of independent school districts six two two to order. It's December eighteenth, six oh two. First on our agenda, we have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we have approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the agenda? Move by OJ, second by Livingston. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, we have an approved agenda. Next, we have public comment, and it looks like we have one person for public comment. So, let's see. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have two to four minutes to speak.
I'm already here.
Alright, thank you.
Rory Sanders, is this on? Can you hear? Rory Sanders, thirty-eight, nineteen, Goodwin Avenue North, Oakdale, Minnesota. Chair Yenner, School Board, Superintendent Osorio, Assistant Superintendent Miller, Cabinet, Students. I'm here to just put out a big, big thank you to Amy Coborn on behalf of North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale Education Association. We just thank you for all your dedicated service and leadership for the past years, and we're gonna miss you. So, thank you very much for all you've done. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Rory. Thank you Amy. Next, we have the achievement award, and Becky Navy is going to present that. And we're all gonna go down.
Becky, do you wanna read it first, and then we'll gather over here? Here, do this. But I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, that's fine. The student, the school board of the North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale School District is proud of its students, citizens, and staff who demonstrate service that is above and beyond the call of duty. We are proud to recognize the following individuals. From Maplewood Middle School staff members, three Maplewood Middle School staff did amazing and heroic work this past month. Judy Lalié and Ty Evans, I'm sorry, Judy is the swimming instructor, and Ty Evans, the physical education teacher, acted swiftly when a student was showing signs of distress in the pool area. Judy quickly began CPR, and Ty assisted by immediately calling nine-one-one, getting the defibrillator, and assisting with medical and student support until first responders arrived at the scene. Because of their excellent teamwork, expertise with medical emergency procedures, and their extremely swift action, the students survived this major medical incident. Next, we have Eric Melzness, Assistant Principal at Maplewood Middle. Also took swi- swift action when he noticed a student choking during lunch. Eric performed the Heimlich maneuver and successfully dislodged the item. Because of skilled staff and prompt responses of these three educators, both students successfully survived life-threatening situations. We are proud of the work of all three individuals and know that students and staff at Maplewood Middle School are in great care. Congratulations on a job well done. Judy, Ty, and Eric are nominated by Assistant Superintendent Troy Miller.
Of our heroes. Alright, heroes in front, and everybody gather around. If you're short, come to the front. Alright, we need our Maplewood leaders, have it get in here. You guys, we need our Maplewood leaders.
You can't see.
Alright, gather around. Alright, we'll go to count of three. Here's one, two, two, three. I can't see my camera, I can't see your face. Teresa.
Alright, thank you again to those award winners. Next, we have the consent agenda. So, the consent agenda consists of routine items that are acted on in a single consolidated motion without board discussion. Board members have the option of pulling items off the consent agenda if they wish to discuss them or consider them individually. This evening's consent agenda includes A, minutes of the November twentieth, twenty eighteen business meeting, B, routine personnel, C, bid awards, and D, dispersments. So, are there any items that you would like removed for discussion? Okay, seeing that, I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Okay, move by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Coborn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So, we have approval for our consent agenda. Next, we have reports, and we're gonna start with student reports. And we have Caitlin from Tartan and Haley from North. Okay, Haley?
Students have been anticipating the long-awaited winter break, and the weeks leading up to it, our students have been excelling in sports and activities. Juniors Shalicia Jones and Dylan Anseletto were chosen at the North St. Paul Minnesota State High School League Excel winners for excellence in community, education, and leadership. They have proven to be great leaders in their grade and will continue to set examples for others throughout the high school. Our boys basketball team beat De La Sal seventy-nine to seventy-four, who was ranked number one in a top twenty-five poll. This is great for the team as they lost a strong number of seniors last year. The student council had a productive month. They hosted a new dance for the first time, a neon-themed dance. There's great student participation, and it was a lot of fun. The club also had the annual teacher date night, in which teachers dropped off their kids for a chance to get a night out. Both the teachers and the students equally love it. Our cheerleading team has been a relatively new sport to the school, with the second year beginning this winter. In the past two varsity competitions, they have scored second and recently placed first with no deductions in their routine. They also cheer at sporting events. Recently, you can see them at the basketball and even hockey games. National Honor Society had the annual Yay for Toys. This project has been done for over ten years in which North High students raised money to buy gifts for families in need during the holiday season. It was a success, and the school helped the goal, helped hit the goal of three thousand dollars. National Honor Society members were able to shop for the gifts, wrap the gifts, and help transport them. It was great to see the school come together before the new year.
I'm from Tartan, then. So, Holly Helping Hands, OACC, and Student Council partnered to give gifts to over two-hundred-and-thirty kids two Saturdays ago. Multiple student clubs such as DECA and NHS came together to dress up as elves and Santa Claus to deliver to the families in need. Carter Thuringer was selected to play in the twenty-eighteen Minnesota All-Star Football Game on Saturday, December fifteenth, at one P.M. at the U.S. Bank Stadium. The semi-formal dance was on Friday, the fifteenth, at Tartan. To prepare and get the school excited, Student Council had themed days including PJ Day, Holiday Sweater, College/Career Day, and Flannel Friday. Students had a lot of fun, and nearly six hundred tickets were sold. It was the first time in many years that the dance was held at Tartan, but students loved it. ASA Asian Student, Asian New Year Celebration was a huge success. Student performances included singing, dancing, musical performances, and a fashion show. Tartan Knowledge Bowl had a meet in early December. Our JV team took first place in the JV competition, and the varsity team earned third in the varsity competition. A great job by our Tartan students. We are very proud. Tartan DECA had Allstate come into the school store today to encourage students to take the X-the-text pledge to not text and drive. Students came and put their thumbprint on a banner in the school during, in the store during school. There was lots of participation for such a great cause. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, you guys. Any questions or comments? Okay, thanks very much, you guys.
When are finals? You're done?
The trimester. But it's only like the second week of the, of the second try, so. So, you're not that far. Okay, thank you. Next, on the agenda, we have Superintendent Osorio.
Well, in keeping with tradition, we are going to be hearing from another one of our lovely school programs tonight. But before we do that, I wanna take a moment to honor our outgoing school board member, Amy Coborn. Amy has been on our school board for eight years, eight incredible years, and has also served as the chair of our school board previously. We're very excited and honored to present Amy with this school board achievement award, that she will also have in honor of her eight years of service with us on the school board. We're very grateful. Not only has Amy served on our own school board, but she also serves on other boards around the community, and in doing so, she's relentlessly in support of six-two-two, children's and family, children and families. And we're just really grateful for her leadership and continued support, and we look forward to her continued collaboration when she's no longer in the role of a school board member. But for right now, we wanna thank Amy and wish her well and her new ventures, as this is her last official board meeting with our school board. So, thank you, Amy. We're grateful for your service, and we're gonna really miss you.
Alright, let's take a picture. Let's do one more picture. One more picture. Here you go. Thank you, Kathleen. She keeps coming up from behind the screen. Alright, count to three. Here we go. One, two, three. One, two, three. I'll take a couple.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have Assistant Superintendent Troy Miller.
Yes, it's my pleasure to introduce Castle Principal Bridget Bruner, and she is going to highlight some of the awesome things happening over at Castle. So, with that, Ms. Bruner.
Doc Miller, thank you, Chair Yenner, Superintendent Osorio, Board Cabinet Members for having me here tonight. It's always awesome to be able to come and share the great happenings at our school. At Castle, we love a good theme, and so this year, our theme is "Have It All." We want our students to have it all. We want them to have a great school year. We want them to show great academic growth and also social-emotional growth. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about how we go about that at Castle. So, when the district adopted their new strategic plan and their mission statement of "We commit each day to develop and empower lifelong learners who thrive in diverse communities." At Castle, we decided that it was a great time for us to work towards getting our stakeholders' input to create a new vision statement. We are currently in the revision statement of, or process of our vision statement and getting approval now after having gathered input to write it. So, it's definitely a work in progress. You'll notice it's rather lengthy right now. We're hoping to get it down to a few less words, but I'll read what we're working off of for the time being. So, Castle Elementary is a neighborhood school that creates a supportive, loving, and inclusive community which prepares students to be scholars. We provide rigorous academic instruction that focuses on supporting individual student growth. We value the rich diversity of our learners and being responsive to their academic and social-emotional needs. Castle is dedicated to collaborating with families to ensure a positive and safe school experience that creates independent learners. Tonight, I'm gonna share a little bit with how we put that vision into action, the places where it's really embedded into our practice, and then how we're pushing ourselves this year to do more and make it more, have more impact. So, first, how do we create scholars? So, talking to our staff and our students, they said, you know, when are we most engaged in learning, and when are we feeling really great about school? And overwhelmingly, they said, when we're able to really go out into the world and connect our learning to the world around us. So, one of the things we did at Castle a couple years ago is said that we really want our students to have that out-of-school experience. So, our goal is for every grade level to have at least two out-of-school experiences each year. So, if your kiddos come to school at Castle, they're gonna go to the nature center, they're gonna go to the zoo, they're gonna go to the theater, they're gonna go to the U of M for a physics experience, they're gonna go to Starbase, they're gonna go to the fire station. We're gonna get them out, seeing how their learning really connects to the world around us. The way we're really pushing ourselves in the, the work of student engagement and really creating scholars is, we also heard from our students and our staff that high engagement also happens when they have technology and hands-on activities. So, that that's a good, a place where they really feel like they're learning. So, it's our goal at Castle to have kids have technology in their hands and using it really to bring their learning to life. So, I'm gonna show a quick example of what has happened so far. This is one project by our fifth graders. So, they took different topics that they had been studying, and they put them into action, and they were able to use the tools of technology to bring it to life and be able to share it with their classmates so that everybody could review all the different content standards and the different areas that they had been working on. So, they loved it. They were super engaged and really excited to share it with everyone who was walking by. They would pull us in and say, "Come watch what we've created." When I recently met with our fourth and fifth grade leaders, they said to me, "Mrs. Bruner, we need another cart of iPads because they're always getting used." And that's really our goal, is that they're used as tools to explore and really create. So, that's work that's happening right now. It's a work in progress, and we're really pushing teachers in that area this year. So, we feel like our field trip experiences are really embedded into our work, and the areas of technology and project-based learning are places where our staff is really starting to explore and enjoying what they're seeing out of our students in those areas. The next connection to our vision that I would like to talk a little bit about is how we help students then feel connected and valued in our school community. So, the things that are really embedded in what we do at Castle each year, we love having a theme book at Castle each year that also connects to a project that you see in our school. So, the first year that we did that work, we used the Great Big Book of Families, and all of our students and staff did self-portraits, and we hung them up throughout the school so that it was very visible that students and staff could see themselves represented in our community. Last year, we used the book Only One You, and our staff did one of the most amazing projects with each kid took a rock and painted it and made it their own, and then they put together the sign that is currently out front where they took all the rocks and put them together. You oftentimes see kiddos when they're coming to and from school, stopping with their families, going, "Look, there's my rock. Isn't it so awesome?" And it has, you know, their work represented amongst our community. This year, we're planning on using the book Beautiful Hands, and we're gonna have our students put their handprints all around our school. We have that unique opportunity since our school's gonna change a bit over the course of the next year, so we're gonna make that project be very visible. We also, along with our theme that kind of overarches the year and has this big project that everybody's a part of, we also use books as a way to connect our schools in our monthly morning, or more, all-school morning meeting. And so, we have a book of the month that connects to our cares, values that we try to teach, and our students partner with a buddy classroom. And so, that brings our community together across grade levels and helps our students to develop relationships with, with students that are in different grades than them. So, it's a great experience for them to be able to feel connected to other students within our community. So, those are two ways that we really feel like it's really embedded in our practice. And this year, the way we're pushing ourselves is to really, really work on how we help kids recognize their own emotional states through our mindfulness practices and showing kids that, you know what, we can recognize where we're at in the moment, and there are things and actions that we can take as a community to help us move into a calm state ready to learn. So, that's one area that we're working on along with the restorative practice. We use circles as a way to build community, have our students learn about each other and connect with their teachers and other classmates, and also that they are learning that, you know what, sometimes we have problems, and that as kiddos, we can solve those problems, and we can restore our relationships, and that that's a way for us to feel valued within our community. So, that's the way we're pushing ourselves this year. Another area that I'd like to talk a little bit about with, in regards to our vision statement and a connection, is our strong partnerships with our families. That's another area that you heard in our vision statement that we think is really important and we know is really important. And so, there are some pieces that we feel like are embedded into our practice. That would be things like our family nights that we have, these informal gatherings of our staff and our families where we eat a meal, we do an activity, and we really have time to connect with families. That's, that's an area that we're feeling really good about. We also feel really great about the fact that a couple years back, you might remember, that the district pushed all of our sites to have Izzy's, and that we combined two schools to have an Izzy experience at Castle. We loved that experience. We thought it was so meaningful and valuable and really brought out a diverse perspective. So, we have kept that practice going, and so the last two years, we've done Castle Izzy's with our equity department. And so, that's another area. It's where we got input from some families around our vision statement and actually students as well during that process. So, that's common practice, things that we feel like are embedded into our work. And then, we're also pushing ourselves in the area of family partnerships. We really want our families to see the academic work that's going on at our sites. So, that's our next step, and several of our teachers are already doing this, where they invite families in to really celebrate the academic growth that's happening. So, we do writing celebrations. We have our fifth graders host a wax museum where there are historical figures, and family members come in, and they can listen to each kid give their little speech on their historical figure. We have an invention fair in first grade where families come in and see it, but we're really pushing our teachers to do more of that and have families in more to see the academic work. And we see that families really love coming out to those experiences and celebrating with their students. We're also pushing ourselves in regards with strong, positive communication home to parents, and really pushing our staff to say, "You know what, pick up the phone, call our families, send them a text message, use it, send an email, make sure that they're hearing all of the great things that our students are doing, because they really are so wonderful, and we wanna make sure that they're hearing that message from us." So, when we talk about these different pieces of our vision statement around creating scholars, having kids feel valued and, and loved in our community, and creating these strong family partnerships, we do all of these things, and our vision is really to have a see-strong academic growth. So, I wanna share a little bit with you on what we're seeing so far this year at Castle. So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about each piece that you see up on the screen. The first thing you'll notice is that second grade is missing, and second grade is missing right now. And they're missing because we recently made the decision to change how we were progress monitoring second grade. So, it just isn't great data since it's only December, and we switched once in there. So, they're not in here now, but they will be as the year progresses. We'll get stronger data on our second grade kids. But I'll talk a little bit about the different pieces of data that you see up on the screen. So, first, our kindergarten. The district as a whole is watching kindergartners with their work in letter sounds, and so, in the fall, when we did some initial assessments of our kindergartners at Castle, our students who were at or above the benchmark was thirty-two percent of our kindergartners. And when we progress monitored them here in December, we saw that seventy-four percent of our kids were at or above benchmark. So, that targeted work that we're doing is amazing, and it's so exciting to see that growth in our kiddos. In first grade, we were, we're working as a district on decodable words, and so, when our students came in, in the fall, at or above benchmark was forty percent of our students at Castle were at or above benchmark. When we progress monitored in December, sixty percent of them were at or above benchmark. So, again, we're making that growth. We're gonna get there by the end of the school year, and we're excited about what we're seeing in our first graders. Next, I'm gonna talk a little bit about our third, fourth, and fifth graders and their CBMR data. So, CBMR is talking about students' fluency, and so, it's a one-minute assessment of their fluency. And what we looked at here was, how much growth do we expect out of kids by the end of January? Because as a district, that's the next time we're gonna do our fast assessments, is at the end of January. But students who are in intervention, we progress monitor them along the way so that we can talk about, is the intervention working or is it not? And so, what I went and did is I looked at, what did we expect in third grade? We expected them at the end of January. We expect our third graders to have grown twenty-seven points if they're in the area of, at either high risk or some risk. And so, these are student, only our students who are in intervention is who we are paying attention to because that's who we progress monitor. So, the percent of our students who already in third grade have hit that twenty-seven point growth or more is at sixty percent right now at Castle, which is amazing that we're already at sixty percent of those kids have already surpassed the expected growth that they're supposed to hit at the end of January. So, they should surpass it by a whole bunch. And eighty percent of them are very, very close to that twenty-seven point mark. And our average growth within that group is twenty-eight points right now. So, super impressive. Our intervention work is working with those students, and it means that those kids who are in intervention are closing that gap on the kids who are not in intervention, or are already at grade level, hitting the benchmark. In fourth grade, our percent of students, this is just- In fourth grade, our percent of students, this is just amazing, 88% of them have hit that growth target. So their growth margin is 18 to 20 points. And 88% of our students who are in intervention have already hit their end-of-January growth. And their average growth is at 32.9 points. So they are just hitting it out of the park as a group. So amazing and definitely a conversation that we're having at Castle right now about fourth graders. What are we doing? What's happening? And what's going on with, in those classrooms and within those intervention groups so that we can spread the wealth to the rest of our school? And then when we look at fifth grade, the percent of students in intervention, half of them have already hit that growth target that we would hope at the end of January. 64% are very close. We expect 18 to 20 points in fifth grade and they're at 21 points as an average. So fifth grade, you know, I will say that each of those students, obviously the data isn't quite as impressive as in our other grade levels. But what I can tell you is that our teachers can talk really specifically about each one of those learners and why they are or why they aren't and what intervention are we changing. So as a system, we're just getting a whole lot smarter at knowing our students. So really, you know, I think what I've demonstrated and shown you tonight is that we really do have it all at Castle. We are creating scholars. We're connecting and valuing our kids within our school community. We're creating strong partnerships and it's really resulting in scholars who are growing as learners and community members. So we're really, you know, putting our vision statement in action. It's not just words, it's what we do at Castle. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that our new space that we're getting is in progress, that that certainly makes it feel like we have it all and that you have all been such a great part in making that happen. So thank you for that. So do you have questions, comments, things you're wondering?
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks. Great report, Bridget. You know, I was just wondering, could you go back to your results page? Yep. The state, you know, has put all kinds of money in its Governor Dayton's legacy into preschool. So what can tell us about, about how many kids enter Castle after having some preschool experience? And is there any, what do teachers say about students having preschool experience versus not having preschool?
For sure. You know, pre-K is an amazing program. And we're really lucky at Castle that this is our second year having pre-K on-site. So that has been unbelievable in how it's helped our kindergartners start off the year.
Really?
More than anything, they know the routine of Castle. So it's so fantastic to have them in our buildings and they're, you know, we continue to find ways that we can incorporate them into the routines of school. And I think that that's the really big growth pieces. They're coming in, they're already walking through the door feeling like they know what it feels like to get off a bus, to get on a bus, to go through a lunch line, to put in a PIN number. You know, they're learning all those things, how to use the big kid bathrooms. They're learning that the big kids aren't that scary, that, you know what? They're pretty nice and usually really helpful to us. And so they're learning those types of things. And we see that then into their academic growth very quickly in kindergarten because they already have some of that social presence there. Of course, they're also learning letter sounds and letter ID and number ID in pre-K as well. And absolutely, those kids have such a great presence within the classroom. So there's a huge impact. I don't have hard data like I do on this slide with that, but I can tell you that they definitely are kids that come in with a whole lot of confidence.
And then just as a follow-up, is there a measurement that you use to quantify or whether they're ready for kindergarten?
Yep. So we do preschool screening and that gives us some ideas of where kids are coming in and how ready they are. You know, we, all we use that for is information for our teachers and making sure that we try to balance classes and make the classes equitable across our kindergarten sections. And then our teachers are just really aware of where kids are coming in as learners. We also, with that, do some letter sound, letter ID, those things as they're coming in in our pre-kindergarten assessments that our teachers do. So they come in early at Castle. In that, in late August, our teachers come in and do some beginning assessments. We have them cut, do some other pieces. So they have their preschool screening data that they get when they're four and five. Then we have that piece of information that we invite them in. Not everyone comes, but we do invite them to come in. And our teachers get some good information about how ready they are for kindergarten. But it's also kind of scary, right?
Sure.
They're only five-year-olds and they're coming in and here's a new big person who's trying to get them to do things. So it's a snapshot of who they are for sure, but it gives us some guidance.
It is one of those world's best workforce benchmarks, you know, whether we're preparing kids for kindergarten.
Yeah.
Through this, you know, through these programs. So I think there's going to be more and more conversation about that.
And we also, you know, now that I'm thinking a little bit more about the question, we also do Kindergarten Blast as well in the summer. And that's been a great program as well to help us really get them ready. And so we target students who haven't had the pre-K experience to come in and have that blast of instruction to help get them ready. So all of those things are certainly helping us with getting kids ready, prepared, and confident for kindergarten.
Because they're really little, but they're also, their brains are just like sponges, right?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, they're ready to take on all kinds of things.
They are.
So, thank you.
You bet.
Bridget, I want to thank you. I have to sit up a little taller because Castle holds a piece of my heart as having two daughters go through Castle. But I'm particularly impressed with this data because for us, you know, when we look at, we talk so often about, you know, a group of students, but, you know, this group of students you've targeted here are those struggling learners. And it really helps when we're on the board to be able to show, hey, these interventions work. And sometimes it's really hard to defend. Do you know what I mean? And so I'm thoroughly impressed with what you have here. And also, I have to say, when I went to the Castle meeting pre-tour last fall, I walked out of there crying because it wasn't the castle I remember because the walls have been put up and it just looks so sterile. So I'm super thrilled and excited for you. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to tour Castle and see the new modular furniture that's coming in next month. But in particular, there's so much chatter in the Oakdale community. I mean, everywhere you go, grocery stores, they're all talking about what's going on at Castle. And in particular, how complimentary the construction crew is of stopping to answer questions. We had several Oakdale residents here tonight honoring Amy and they all said the same thing. So I'm super excited for your community and your building and look forward to what that's going to unveil next when that's all finished.
We are very excited and we're excited about, you know, when I talk about having kids have those outside and real-world experiences, it definitely is going to be that because the construction company is definitely hands-on and said, you know, we're going to get our kids out there, we're going to show them what's going on, make sure that they're a part of it and feel like, you know, it really is their school and that they have inputs into what's going on in the learning opportunity. I take the big picture of Castle everywhere I go. Whenever we're having an event, I'm like, "Look, this is our new school." And everyone's response is, "For real? Really? That's really it?" And I'm like, "Yeah, that's really it. It's going to look like this in the fall." So we are definitely very excited.
Good for you. Thank you.
You know, I just wanted to make a comment too. I'm doing some research for my oldest daughter. I'll be the first one going to college for my family. And I'm, I don't mean for my, the history of my family, I mean, my own children. But...
Your birthday's starting early. That's impressive.
But one of the findings I'm consistently seeing is that a feeling of connectedness to your K-12 school is one of the biggest indicators of success for college students. So I loved that your presentation was so focused on building that connectedness from elementary school because I think that's how you set up kids for success in college. So I just wanted to call that out. And thanks very much for the presentation.
Yeah, you bet.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have the business office. Randy.
So let's see here. Well, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Superintendent Osorio and cabinet members. Hey, it's that time of year again. It's kind of interesting at this point in time, we have our audit presentation later on, so we're letting go of 1718. Tonight, we talked a little bit about the current budget and then we look forward with the levy process for budget year 1920. So tonight officially culminates, it started a few months ago, of course, with the proposed budget, talking about some things. But this is basically the levy for next year and setting that levy is kind of the cornerstone for a lot of different things, not only facilities-wise, but also about budgeting for the start of the process for the 2019, 2020 school year, which actually starts, would start July 1st of next year. So without further ado, again, this presentation is what used to be called the Truth and Taxation Presentation, and now they basically call it an evening with the public. It's pursuant to Minnesota law, we're required to discuss not only the proposed levy, but also kind of give them a snapshot about the current budget, the 2018, 2019. So we'll keep it brief and then I'll turn it over to Jim and Jackie to talk about the audit and kind of what transpired in 2017, 2018. So anyway, what's going to happen? I'll talk about the presentation here, the levy. Jim will talk about the audit for 2017. And then in the action items, I'll look for approval for the actual 2017, 2018 audit. And we'll be looking for action also for the paid 2019 levy. So just to take a look at an overview at 2018, 2019 budget, you know, as you can see, these are the revenues. We have nine funds. Each of them has a specific purpose. The general fund, of course, is our, is our operational funds. It's actually what we use to educate the kids in our district. All the other funds support that mission, support our mission of educating kids, whether it's food service, community service, debt service, et cetera. It's a support mechanism. As you can see, when you look at the different funds, this is kind of the first year, we're looking at breaking the $200 million mark in revenue. So it's a significant amount of money that, you know, we're empowered, you're empowered, I'm empowered to do what's best for the children of our district and also the stakeholders in our district. And I think we've done some nice work, not only last year, but this year in building into the future. So if you look at it from a visual standpoint, you can see here how these budgets are broken down for the overall revenue budgets, the 200 million. And I will tell you that you need to take the general fund, which is 75.3%, and you need to take a look at the self-insured health fund because that's basically our health insurance program for the district. And had, have we not been self-insured, those dollars would be into the general fund itself. Okay? So when you look at the 75.3% and you look at the 8.2%, about 83.5% of the revenue generating in our district goes to support the general fund. So this kind of gives you a visual of those breakdowns and where the revenue is used. From an expenditure standpoint, again, when you take a look at last year's budget as compared to this year's budget, we're at about a $4.5 million increase overall, about $198 million. Again, the general fund is the biggest piece of this. And again, we are in the people business, so a lot of these budgets are people-oriented. About 83% of our, of our budgets overall go towards salaries, benefits, compensation because that's what we do. We educate, we work with kids. I always tell my group, even though I guess, you know, food service touches kids, but indirectly, my area, my business service area, we do touch kids indirectly. So I always like to think of our operations as helping learners learn. Okay? We're helping them through a safe and secure environment, providing the resources, et cetera. When you take a visual look at this, again, you can kind of see where the breakdown of the funds is of the approximately almost $200 million. Again, if you add the self-insured with the general fund, you come up with about 82.8% of the expenditures are associated with the general fund itself. Again, it is, it is what we do. And so that's kind of where we're at as far as a snapshot that we require to present. I will be bringing some budget revisions at our January board meeting. We'll have our first revision after we take a look at where we're at. I will report back to, you know, flip session, kind of here's where we are, here's where, kind of where we're going. We'll take a look at some projections into next year, et cetera. So the paid 2019 levy information, again, these are dollars that will be levied to our taxpayers for the 1920 budget. That actually goes from July 1st of 2019 to June 30th of 2020. School district's tax levy is set by, again, state formula. Sometimes we have no choice. It's state determined. It automatically happens according to formula. It's voter approval. When we start looking at the buildings or the work that we've done or the operating referendums that our stakeholders have graciously supported us on, it can happen then obviously by voter approval. And then the school board also has discretionary input on where they want to see the school board go to accomplish their mission, their objectives, et cetera. So when we take a look at the factors, of course, state formula, legal compliance, legislative action, that determines our levy process. Again, asking voters for operating referendums or building bonds. And then the local factors, we talk about some of the discretionary things that you, us have control over, long-term facilities, pay-as-you-go, OPEV, those types of things that we make decisions on the direction of the school district. And again, people's taxes are influenced or impacted not only by those things, but also about assessed values of the property, et cetera. That also has an impact on what they actually pay in property taxes. And then also, not only do, does the school district, it's also the city and also the county. And all those three come to fruition, certified levies. And then the tax statements obviously go out the end of February, beginning of March. So when we look at this piece, it's just the school district portion of those taxes. And right now, when you take a look at the paid 2019 levy, this is how it breaks down to those three sources. So about 10% of our levy is actually set by the state. It's state determined. About 44% of that amount is also approved by voters. And then 46% is actually set by the school board in conjunction with administrative recommendations. So if you look at levy impacts, before we look at the actual, and you've obviously seen this a couple, three times, just some significant, you see some different significant highlights. I only had one question this time. So if you look at what's kind of happened, I've kind of surveyed some folks to take your name off the tax statements, but I kind of like to know what happened to the school district properties. I've gotten about eight to 12 of them. It's interesting. And so one of the things, and I think I told you about this, or I did tell you about this, one of the things we're going to see is a kind of a flip from non-voter-approved to approved, that referendum piece we talked about as we're moving forward. So I only had one question on that. And then when I talked to the gentleman, I said, you know, "What happened to your non-voter-approved?" And he goes, "Oh, that actually went down even more than, you know, than the voter-approved actually went up." So I think when I talked to different stakeholders and got their tax statements, I think the stakeholders' portion of the school district levy this year is pretty flat. A lot of people had maybe slight increases, but some of them also had, you know, decreases. And that was kind of the goal. That's kind of the goal we wanted to hit. So that was one of the significant highlights. Again, phase one of our facilities plan. A lot of these things have to do with our phase one of our facilities plan for Castle and Richardson, which Principal Bruner talked about. And as you'll see, you know, we did all the financing, we kept the taxes pretty much flat. But one of the things was the increase in lease levy of $254,000. That gave us the additions to both the elementary schools, all right? And it had to do with our phase one and our renovation. There was an increase in debt service of about $3.4 million. That had to do with long-term facilities, abatement, capital facilities bonds for Castle and Richardson project. So you're going to see, we did all these things and we traded some things to keep the tax impact flat with no increase. And then as you can see here, we had a decrease in long-term facilities pay-as-you-go. We've normally in the past levied about $8 million. We dropped that down about almost 2.5, a little over 2.5 million to kind of offset some of these other increases. And then we had a decrease, again, on prior year adjustment. And then we had a decrease, again, on prior year adjustment. It was just a transfer for our capital facilities bonds from the general fund to debt service. So all in all, this kind of worked out. And when you take a look at our general fund levy, we have general fund levy, we have community service, we have debt service and OPEB debt service. When you take a look at what transpired in the general portion of our levy, it actually went down about $2.5 million. This was to help pay for the debt service on the long-term facilities maintenance and some of the bonding instruments that we put in play in order to pay for the renovation. So this piece went down approximately 7.49%, about 2.5 million. If you take a look at community ed, community ed went down a small portion. You can see debt service went up about 34%. Again, these are the different types of debt service mortgages, so to speak, that we're putting in place to do Castle and Richardson. When you look at OPEB, the actual OPEB payment went down. That gave us some more flexibility. And when you look at what's actually transpiring, we're keeping our levy pretty much flat. And remember, we agreed to kind of bump it up 1%, just because there were some things we wanted to do, plus we felt that the growth of the tax base would absorb some of those things. And what I found out, it pretty much did. So all in all, we were able to borrow $60 million to do phase one renovations in our school district without doing any tax increase to the public, okay? So as you can see, the increase is about 1%. And when you look at what's transpired over the last four or five years, now remember, 2016 to 2017 was the passage of our operating referendum. And so that brought in about 7.3 million, $7.4 million worth of additional revenue. So had that not passed, this whole thing would be flat. So as you can see, we've held our taxes the same since 2015, with the exception of the passage of our stakeholders voting in that operating referendum. So I think we've done some really good things. You've helped us, moved us forward, and I feel pretty good about that. So with that, I guess I would turn to any comments if anybody's in the...
Okay.
Not all at once. Not all at once.
Yeah. And I would open it up to any questions that, you know, you may have, so.
Nice job.
Okay, thanks. So with that, I'm going to actually turn it over to Jim and Jackie from MMKR, who's our independent auditors. If you remember, each year, the state requires us to get an audit from an independent firm. First, before I turn it over to them, I'd like to thank you guys, because I think it's a team effort. And Amy, appreciate your hard work over the last years. I've enjoyed getting to know you and, as Christine said, we're going to miss you tremendously. So thank you for your work and effort, as well as all of you guys, because like I said, it takes a team to move the district forward for kids, et cetera, so I feel pretty good about that. I'd also like to thank the cabinet, you know, obviously, and Superintendent Assaria. We've done some good work together here. And then my staff, Joe McCabe and Travis Byrne and Janet Doman have done amazing things. And I'm just going to throw out a break, and then I'll turn it over to you guys. So as we remember, we have, we talked about the CAFER, and this is the first year of our CAFER...
Got to get in the maker phone.
Our comprehensive annual financial report. It goes over and above our basic financial statements as you look through it. Travis was a champion on this. It takes a lot of work to put this through the first year. We feel pretty good about this. We're actually, this is one ingredient to get us to a certificate of excellence, which is provided by the Association of School Business Officials, which is a national organization. And I'm just going through right now and trying to fill out this checklist, and it's 40 pages long.
Wow.
If anybody's up to it, you are.
Well, I tell you, I was like, whoa, don't know if we did the right thing here. But I mean, it talks about, you have to submit this checklist, and you have to adhere to these things in order to get this award. So we'll keep you posted, but we're going to put some things together to try to submit it, but we feel good about this.
Randy, I just want to say, I am confident that we have the best business manager in the state.
Absolutely. Appreciate the, the privilege, obviously, so to be honest with you, so.
As we're transitioning to MMKR, coming up to speak, I just want to add a little bit about this whole process for the CAFER. Districts are not required to have this. This is above and beyond. And our business team under Randy's leadership has really stepped up, and I am very confident we're going to earn this national award. And I think it's going to say a lot to our voters, our taxpayers, to show the incredible care we are taking with our school finances and our taxpayer dollars. So I just can't emphasize enough how proud I am of our business department and Randy's leadership, because this is so far above and beyond what most school finance departments do. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys all set? Without further ado...
Well, members of the board, my name is Jim Eikten. I'm at MMKR CPAs, here to give an audit report for the year ended June 30th, 2018. Randy's covered most of my topics, so I do commend Randy for his excellent presentation and did an excellent job. I will kind of lead into my comments, first of all, when we start going in through these audit reports in December, they tend to be in and around these truth and taxation hearings, and you should be happy that there's not a room full of people. Because I've been to some audit reports in December that weren't like that. Secondly, I'd like to, if nobody, some of you have met my partner Jackie, who's here this evening. Jackie's worked very diligently on the audit with us, with me together. She's here this evening, I don't think unless we need her to speak, but she's here observing, and she did excellent work on this job as well. Also, I want to kind of go back to Randy's comments on the CAFER. It is an excellent document. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, even if you don't read it from page to page, it's what, 126 pages, I think. As it relates to what you used to do and what you do here, there's two main components that are different. The first one, there is a transmittal letter, and if you get an opportunity, right in the first part, one of the immediate first pages of the document, there's a transmittal letter, which is somewhat financial-related, but mostly not. It really talks about the district and highlights some of the things that are happening, some of the mission statements, some of the values that you're working towards. And then towards the end of the document, there's a section called the statistical section, and it's multiple pages long, but it has a tremendous amount of data that's in really 10-year increments. And you can get a lot of information about the district and what's happened over the district over the last 10 years that you wouldn't have seen in the past. So if you get a chance, you can look at those two particular areas. But overall, it's a great document for the district and the community. So in my audit report for this year, really, the purpose for me being here this evening is to provide a presentation on the audit. We do issue, as part of the audit process, an opinion on your financial statements. It probably should say comprehensive annual financial report, because that's what you're doing now. We also audit any other areas that are required by standard, by statute, as well as anything that comes out of the Office of State Auditor here in the state of Minnesota, which would include the audit of student activities, your internal controls. There's a very significant audit of federal awards that you're receiving called the single audit. And then lastly, we audit compliance with state laws and regulations. The Office of State Auditor gives us a list of the laws to test. We don't test every Minnesota law, only those on the list. So we issue what's called the management report, and you receive that as part of the information in that particular document. We do provide a lot of information, and I'll touch on those in my presentation. In the first part of that document, we go over the opinions that were issued and the results of the audit. We were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the comprehensive annual financial report. We fully believe and agree with Randy that we anticipate receiving a certificate of excellence in financial reporting. It was certainly our goal. I have read the checklist that Randy's gone through already multiple times, and hopefully all goes well in that regard. We don't have any findings to report in the internal control areas or in the compliance reports that were issued. The other parts of the audit, we did have three findings to report. The first one is in the area of the single audit. We did note in your single audit of federal awards, a finding related to what we call time and effort reporting. So there's very stringent requirements in the federal single audit for reporting really salaries and people, when they're working in these areas, are required to keep certain coding, keep record-keeping and submit record-keeping regarding what they're working on. For instance, if they're in the Title I program, they need to be able to document, well, I worked X hours in title, and then I went back to my other job. And all that is very strict requirements in that area. Our finding in particular here relates to some of the controls over that. Specifically, I want to state that it relates to the controls. Some of the weaknesses in this area relate to some of the structural oversights of that accounting. We did not report any compliance errors in this area, which is significant. We didn't find any errors in how they reported. It was mostly how the structure was set up in terms of overseeing what was being reported. I mentioned that we also had some findings in the Minnesota legal compliance area for the statute that relates to contracting. We noted that for one of the items that we tested, the district did not receive a withholding affidavit prior to making final payment on a contract. So Minnesota law requires, anytime you make final payments on any contracts, you're required to get what's called a withholding affidavit. It's actually a Form 130, IC 134. What the purpose of that is in statutes, and why the statutes are written that way, is it's really validating, verifying that the vendors, the contractors are in good standing with the state and that they're paying their withholdings or their taxes. So we noted one contract that didn't have that, that you didn't receive that form. Again, does that mean that that contractor was not paying their taxes? No, it just meant that you didn't receive the form prior to making final payment. And you actually did receive the form eventually, it was just not prior to the final payment going out. The last finding that we have here for one of the four contracts that we tested, we noted that the bid that was placed did not obtain a performance or payment bond for all bids and all...
We had one.
We had one of the ones we tested.
We had a performance bond.
Okay, good clarity. Again, that is a protection for the district to receive those, as well as a law. And certainly, that's, I guess, an isolated instance in overall regarding that particular area. So I've been here before, as you know. I'm going to give you my theme when it comes to audits. We're here to audit you, but also it is a learning experience. Audits are about getting better and improving. So whenever I see findings, my first words are, well, what are we going to do? How are we going to correct it? What's the corrective action plan? Well, I'll tell you, the staff here has gone above and beyond this, these particular findings to correct them. And by the time I'm standing here today, all of the corrections have been made, the new correction action plans have been submitted, they've been talked about amongst the staff. We don't get very far from finding these before we hear back from Randy and his staff, well, this is what we're going to do, and we've talked to the people that have dealt within these areas. So these findings are taken very seriously here at the district, and we anticipate that we would not have these again next year, and we would report that back to you at that point. So that is actually, oh, I'm going to skip ahead because I think it is important. So in that theme, we are required in audit to follow up on prior audit findings. The only findings we had last year were in the student activity area regarding really receipts and record-keeping over receipts. And you'll find in our report that that finding went away. That's the theme, that's the trend we would want to see, and again, we fully anticipate that to be the case. And that's what this particular slide said. We didn't have any findings of student activities this year, which is excellent, good record-keeping. So, yeah, kind of have something, right? No. So overall, the audit from a compliance perspective is excellent. From my perspective, the three findings were very minor in overall operational organization of this size. As Randy said, 200 million, I think, was the number, and to have these three items is not uncommon. You prefer not to have it, but certainly the corrective action we anticipate will take place, and they'll go away in the future. So the second part of any audit is really the financial results for the year. Randy's touched on some of these, but I'll touch on them in data that we had available and made available to you. So in our report, we start with information on fund balance. Fund balance is used widely by both the state and local districts as a tool to measure equity, and they compare that typically to the overall operation, which in this case is expenditures. So this graph in my presentation talks about trends in statewide fund balance. Really, what does our state have collectively in fund balance as a percentage of operations? And you can see in the graph, it's actually flattened out at about 20% of operations. A decade ago, probably before 2009, it was probably more like 10%. School districts have really given, what occurred during some of the downturn, some of the recessionary days, when the state held back quite a bit, our resources have tended to have more fund balance. So we're seeing that 20% number, albeit the economy's better, the fund balance is starting to flatten out at that level. In terms of the school district here, your school district, you can see some of the improvements in fund balance. For fiscal 2018, the data that I presented, fund balance is at 13% using the statewide percentage. Remember, this particular percentage is different than what percentage you're using internally. You do have a fund balance policy that guides your internal percentages, and I'll get to that percentage later, but this is mostly just used for comparison purposes. One of the trends that I can see right in this bar that I love is you can just see the improvement in fund balance over the last few years, all very planned out, all very planned full, but that is a good trend to see overall. So we do provide information on some other trends, starting with revenues, on really, we use on a per-student basis, revenues per ADM served. If you look at that particular presentation, you'll see that overall, the district's revenues per ADM were 15,300 a year ago, which compares to the Seven County Metro area comparison of 15,200, almost identical to your comparables, a little less than the general fund, but again, not all that significantly different. You look towards 2018, the year that we audited, you're seeing the referendum that was passed coming into the property tax area, which Randy pointed out in his earlier presentation. Overall, again, you're also seeing some revenue increases in some one-time areas in other, which is from E-Rate, and there was a Mighty Ducks grant that came into that category that is reflected there. So what we tend to see, when you see comparable figures on the revenue side, you'd hope to see comparable figures on the expenditure side, and that is certainly the case. Seven County Metro area expenditures per student are 15,300, and for 2017, the district had 15,100. Completely what you would anticipate, given your slightly less revenues, overall, you're spending slightly less than the average, very consistent data. For 2018, you're seeing some increases, certainly the referendum has to do with that. Most of that is going into the classroom in the form of regular instruction. You can see regular instruction dollars per student went up by almost, what is that, $210 per student, mostly in the form of salaries and benefits in those areas. One item or one line I like to point out is debt service. You can see debt service fund expenditures were down this year, basically due to just scheduled payments, but you can see that overall is lower than the average Seven County Metro area by almost $300 per resident, which is, shows good debt service management on the part of the district. In the general fund, I mentioned earlier, the general fund's financial position improved. You can see the district plan for roughly a $3 million increase, both revenues and expenditures. Well, revenues were higher than anticipated, expenditures were lower than anticipated, ultimately creating a result of increased fund balance district-wide. You'll see in this particular presentation that the unassigned fund balance increased to 14.7 million, which is 10%, 10.3% of your operation. The district does have a fund balance policy that is guided by that number, or guides that number. by that number, or guides that number. I'm gonna read it because it's very important, the actual language. The district maintains a minimum unassigned fund balance in the general fund of 5% to 7%. So you can see that fund balances is higher than that range. Randy, I'm sure, will be coming forth with budget adjustments and other suggestions as to what that means for the future of the district. But overall, that's a good position to be in when it comes to fund balance. One of the characteristics that I heard recently is in terms of ratings, the bond ratings that the district has been seeing. They're getting calls from raiders. This particular increase in fund balance will certainly be a very positive note from the rating agencies when they see this overall improvement. So I wanted to point out just a few other things. We do provide information on general fund revenues. Overall, the general fund revenues were higher than budget, just slightly, about 2%. Special education aid was a category that was higher than enrollment, than projected as well as the overall enrollment. One of the graphs I didn't put up here shows some trend lines for enrollment. If you look at that one, you'll note that it's one of the first actual increases in enrollment the district has seen in quite a while, which is a very huge positive for the organization. On the expense side, you're seeing expenditures being below budget, certainly a very positive thing, overall results. One item that stands out to me when I look at expenses is expenses were below budget in the area of transportation. That's an area that most districts are experiencing higher than expected transportation costs. So it does show good fiscal management on the district's part. You do have other funds, as Randy mentioned. The food service fund ended the year with an increase. The community service fund had an increase. Both of these funds have adequate fund balance for their, certainly their operational size, as you can see in the presentation. I'm gonna go back. I also want to cover one other fund Randy briefly mentioned, and that is the district's internal service fund. I don't know how long it's been, maybe five years? Five years that you've had the internal service fund for health insurance. Globally, in our clientele, that particular fund over this five years has varying results from district to district to district. Your experience has been very good. At the end of the year, you have a fund balance of about 5 million, 5.4 million, which is roughly 30% of the operation in the internal service fund. That particular fund is important, given the fact that it can have some huge swings from one year to the next, just purely based on claims. So you really want to have an adequate fund balance in that particular fund, and certainly you're working towards that with that 30%. But I only caution that because we've seen it a number of times this year where districts just saw a one-time decline out of nowhere. You just do not know how that's gonna occur. So just a word of caution, but overall, that's very positive. So with that, I'll summarize. I was able to issue a clean opinion. I had the one finding on the single audit of federal awards. Two findings for Minnesota legal compliance, and most importantly, those findings from last year went away. I think the highlight, and it should be in bold, is certainly the certificate of excellence in finance reporting. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, it's excellent work on the part of the district. And overall, certainly, the financial position is improving as well as very stable, and your results show adherence to budget, which I think is also important. I will share that the staff that Randy has in the office when it comes to knowledge and experience and knowing what's happening is second to none. You can ask a question all the way along the way, and Randy's gonna know, or at least one of the staff knows almost immediately, which doesn't, is very helpful, but also very comforting from an audit perspective. So with that, I'll turn it over to...
Teresa?
Jim, it's a pleasure. Thank you very much. But it's really a question, I think, for Randy, because we're gonna accept the audit a little bit later, but I noticed that the introductory letter is, it starts off to the school board. So do we have to accept this too, or is there a role as a board we play in this, Randy? Okay.
Is this kind of a different way we win?
Okay. I just didn't know what the particulars. And then I'm just wondering if there shouldn't be an achievement award coming up for his staff, because this is, this itself is...
I'll jump in on this one. The Association of School Business Officials, which is the certificate of achievement program, they, it'll take them a little time, but they will send you, they will send you a plaque, and they'll send a press release. And that is your opportunity to get in front of the public, to get in front of the board with that certificate.
Great, great job, Randy. And thank you, Jim.
And I did forget a couple of people. Paula Polkamp, who does an amazing job with the food service, and Terry Johnson, who, both these guys I really love working with, and they've done amazing things with their departments, and they're great financial managers, to be honest with you. So it's been a privilege to work with both of them.
Anybody else? No?
Thank you for the presentation, and I just want to say again, thank you to your whole office, because this is amazing stuff. And it's, we're very, very lucky to have the employees working for us that we do. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right. So then we are moving on to action items. And from the business office, we're gonna start out. Steve Hunt is gonna do the acknowledgement of contributions.
Minnesota statute 123B-02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. The Director of Business Services has recommended the following resolution. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 622 that the school board accept with appreciation the following contributions and permit their use as designated by the donors. The first this evening is Teresa Oje donating four boxes of three-ring binders and a computer lift to the district staff. Jill Standish provided 13 hand-knit winter hats to the Richardson students. And then we have a number of folks in the area that have donated to Meals on Wheels. The first is 3M Foundation Volunteer Match Program from Mark Walters, $500. Doug Andrews from Andrews Built LLC donated $100 to Meals on Wheels. And Michael Testa donated $50 to Meals on Wheels. Walter and Mary Lou Lindeman donated $200. And Caroline donated $25 to Meals on Wheels. Josephine Zug donated $500 to Meals on Wheels. Lori Carnes, $47. Kimberly Tushito, $50. And Amy and Duke Coburn, $100 to Meals on Wheels. I hope that continues in the future. I couldn't resist. I'm sorry. Diane Crenshaw donated $50. Kathleen Johnson, $50. Lynn and Mary Jo Hassel, $50. And Mary Jones donated $47 to Meals on Wheels. Hans and Becky Nevy donated $100 to Meals on Wheels. Tim McCain, $25. Lynn Howe, $50. Kurt and Joan Reeves, $47. Arlene Morgan, $47. And Kristen Nelson donated $200 to Meals on Wheels. Connie Hall donated winter hats, gloves, scarf, and socks to Richardson Elementary. And Susan Payne donated $40 to the Maplewood Middle School Library to purchase books in memory of Preston Grinnell. Shelley Clausen donated a lawnmower for use by the North High Industrial Tech. And Alan and Mary Wynn donated $200 to the Harmony Adult Education ESL program. And I'm sure that brings our total fiscal year 2018, 2019 monetary contributions to $53,550.34, and I move these contributions with much appreciation.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. So moved by Steve.
Second.
Second by Coburn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay.
I said aye.
We all said aye.
She's getting funky now.
How many bars did you have?
Not one. That's the problem.
So that's approved. And again, thank you to all those donors. We appreciate it. Next we have action item designate combined, oh, sorry, approval of 2018 payable 2019 tax levy, Randy. Randy, should I just go ahead and read the resolution?
Sure.
Okay. So be resolved by School Board of Independent School District 622 that the 2018 payable 2019 property tax levy is adopted in the total amount of $48,221,970. And further, that the school board clerk is authorized to sign the document used to certify the property tax levy to the county auditors and the Minnesota Department of Education. So I need a motion, a second, for approval.
Still moved.
Moved by Coburn.
Second.
Second by Livingston. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Okay, that motion carries. Next, we have designate combined polling locations. Randy, do you want to add anything to that?
State legislation changed in 2017. So this is actually something, whether we go out for a facilities bond or a bond, we should do every single, you know, December anyway. Just puts it in perspective so that we can hold an election if we so choose. So, especially on off-years. So...
If I could just add one more thought to that as well. Not only for bond referendum and things like that, but in the event that we were ever to unexpectedly have to replace a board member or something midterm, you need to be able to have an election. Think about the city of Maplewood, that's got, right now, they've got a city council election that's gonna happen, a special election. And if you don't have those polling places combined or stated by the end of the calendar year, you can't make those changes mid-year. So that's part of why we have to do this every year, and we will continue to do this every year, whether we have something on an agenda or not for an election.
And again, great work by Joe. She's kept us, you know, kinda in the loop on all this stuff. Joe McCabe's been a great, she's been our election person, so she's done a great job with this.
Okay, thank you. Yep, Teresa?
I just wanna thank them for the patience, because I think I called and emailed about this topic about four times, trying to understand it, because having been on the board for a while, this is brand new. And so it, you know, and the only thing that I thought was interesting is that regardless of when we would have an election, whether it's February, May, or November, it all has to be decided by the end of the calendar year or the year before. So that's, to me, the big takeaway. I just hope we put it on the ballot every, or, not on the ballot, but as an action item every year.
And most school districts are doing the same thing we're doing right now at their December board meetings. So...
Thank you. Okay, the resolution. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 622, state of Minnesota, as follows. Number one, pursuant to Minnesota statute section 205A.11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district, which have been established by the cities and towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Number two, pursuant to Minnesota statute section 205A.11, the board may establish a combined polling place for several precincts for school district elections not held on the day of statewide election. Each combined polling place must be a polling place that has been designated for the use as a polling place by a county or municipality. The following combined polling places are established to serve the precincts specified for all school district special and general elections, not held on the same day as the statewide election in the calendar year following the adoption of this resolution. So the polling places are River of God Church, North Presbyterian Church, Cowan Elementary School, Richardson Elementary School, Gladstone Fire Station, Wakefield Park Community Building, Maplewood Community Center YMCA, Redeeming Love Church, First Evangelical Free Church, Ramsey County Library, Maplewood Middle School, East Metro Regional Public Safety, Beaver Lake Education Center, Carver Elementary School, Lutheran Church of Peace, Lake Elmo City Hall, Apostolic Bible Institute and Church, Transfiguration Church, Redeemer Baptist Church, House of Prayer Church, Silver Lake Methodist Church, Oakdale Discovery Center, Hope Evangelical Free Church, Guardian Angels Church, King of Kings Lutheran Church. Number three, pursuant to Minnesota statute section 205A.09, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the same day as the statewide election between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Number four, the clerk is directed to file a certified copy of this resolution with the county auditors of each of the counties in which the school district is located, in whole or in part, within 30 days after its adoption. Number five, as required by Minnesota statute section 204B.16 subdivision 1A, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice to new polling place locations to each affected household with at least one registered voter in the school district whose school district polling place location has been changed. The notice must be non-forwardable notice mailed at least 25 days before the date of the first election to which it will apply. A notice that is returned as undeliverable must be forwarded immediately to the appropriate county auditor, who shall change the registrant's status to challenged in the statewide registration systems. Okay, and we need a motion, a second, for approval.
Still moved.
Okay. Moved by Coburn, second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Okay, that motion carries. This is posted somewhere for people? I mean, where is it posted?
This is all posted in the...
We will double check to make sure that we have it posted on our website as well.
There's no election currently called there.
Correctly. There's not an election. And in the event that there is a future election called, we will be publishing all this information and sending this out to voters as well. But we'll make sure it gets posted on our, on our website, too.
Okay, thank you. All right. And then the next action item is acceptance of fiscal year 2018 audit report. Anything? So it was the audit report Jim Ickton presented. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District number 622 that the audit reports for the fiscal year ended in June 30, 2018, presented by Malloy Montague Karnowski Radisovich and company P.A. be accepted as presented.
Still moved.
Okay, moved by Coburn.
Second.
Second by Oje. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Okay, that motion carries as well, and thank you again. All right. Next, we have action items from teaching and learning. We have a revision of the school calendar, and Peter is here.
Chair Yetter, Directors of the Board, you have before you a resolution asking for an amendment to our 2018-19 calendar. And this is a result of the college board who puts out the ACT test. And we don't have those dates when the calendar is originally adopted. And we do have the date now for the test for this school year, which is gonna be April the 2nd. Last year, the board decided to... Last year, the board decided to make it a non-school day for 9th and 12th graders at the high school level to create the best possible testing environment. We do have 10th graders proposed to be in school that day. It's a great opportunity for them to take their MCA test. So we would have 10th and 11th graders only at the high school level. Happy to take any questions, if there are any.
Okay. I'll read the motion. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 622, that the 2018-2019 school calendar be revised to reflect the April 2, 2019, as a school day for 10th and 11th graders only at the high school level, with an early release for the purpose of the MCA and the ACT testing. So I need a motion of second for approval.
Amy?
Still moved. Okay. Moved by Coburn, second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. So that motion carries. Thank you, Peter. The next section is the school board section, setting a retreat. We're looking to set a date for the school board retreat. February 23, 2019 has been proposed. So that the board retreat begin at 9:00 a.m. on February 23, 2019, in room 202 of the district education center. And that's an action item, right? So we need a motion of second.
Still moved.
Move by Coburn, second by Oje. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Okay. That carries, so we have our board retreat set. Next, we have board communication. Teresa, do you want to start out with board communication?
Don't you have to do number two? Revised January...
Oh, sorry. Yep. Okay, revised January 15, 2019 special meeting agenda. Let's see. So bid awards for Castle and Richardson Project could not be completed in time for the December 18 business meeting, but is desirable to present them for approval prior to January 22 business meeting. Since we already set the January 15 special meeting agenda, it's proposed that the agenda be revised to include the bid awards. So that the January 15, 2019 special meeting agenda be revised as such. Number one, oath of office. Number two, election of officers. Number three, organizational resolution. And number four, bid awards.
Still moved.
Okay. Moved by Coburn. Oh, in the board communication. Okay. Second by Navy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Okay, and that motion carries, too, so we added the bid awards. Okay. Next, we have board communications. And Teresa, do you want to start out?
Sure. I just wanted to thank the Hmong parent group for our invitation, and I heard Tartan had a similar event, we heard tonight from the board rep as well, but I was really moved to tears at seeing such connectivity and such beauty and pageantry. Very proud group, and I did speak with Cheryl Lee, the vice principal, who was there dressed in Hmong attire, and she did share that the Hmong population represents double-digit percent of students at the high school. So fascinating event. And then I just wanted to wish everybody a wonderful, happy holiday, and safe travels, all of that. And lastly, Amy, I just want to thank you for your eight years, and I would like to put in a special request to see the newest addition of your family, if you could bring that in at some point. The one that's live, not this stuffed animal, so...
It has four legs.
Yeah, that has four legs. That has four legs, yes. But thank you for your service and savor your time off.
Amy, I told your husband, Duke, at your little gathering to honor you that leadership is hard to define, but you know it when you see it. And we saw it in you, and we are so grateful, because you came in and did this leadership thing at a time we really needed it. Thank you so much. I also wanted to say one more thing, and that is AMSD is having a little legislative preview on Friday, January 4. Let's see, it's early, 7:30 a.m. And it's at the Quora Education Center, which is the former, you know, what do they call it? Little... No, no, no. It's in Little Canada. It used to be called, what, 916 Capital View?
Capital View.
Yeah, yeah. And so, and now Capital View's gone, and Quora has replaced it. So this is where they're...
On the same property.
On the same property. It's quite an elaborate project. You were involved in that, Teresa. Anyway, yeah, so that, you know, everyone's invited, if you're interested. They're going to kind of run through their legislative requests, and it should be a good gathering, so. And oh, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Hope everyone has a safe and joyful time. Thank you.
To mirror what Nancy said, Amy, I just want to thank you for the really strong leadership that you showed on the board. You're the first board member that's going to be leaving us since I've joined the board, and so I'll miss your leadership and all your input and your dedication, but I'm really grateful that you're still involved with the Education Foundation. So thank you so much for that. I also want to mirror what Teresa said about the Hmong New Year event. The Hmong Parent Group and the Hmong Parent Committee, they deserve a lot of praise for all the work that they put into it, and also community ed for 622. The event, logistically, was just kind of an amazing feat. There were so many people there. The auditorium at North High School was packed. The cafeteria was packed, and so were all the hallways. And I heard that the food was delicious, which is probably partly why it was gone by the time I was able to get there. But like Teresa said, there was just a lot of pride there, and it was really exciting to see the culture and the traditions, and also to celebrate the contributions that the Hmong community has made in our community. And also, a third thing I'd like to talk about is that the Eagle Point Elementary School, their parent group, they met their fundraising goal this year, and so Principal Broland, Sean Broland, he got to camp out... Last year, he camped out on top of the roof in a gorilla suit. This year, it was going to be colder, and so he camped out in the gymnasium, but he hosted a special reading time, and there was members of the community that came and read to students and their families, and my kids really enjoyed it. And we had a police officer come and read. There was a firefighter, someone from the Oakdale Library. And we also had someone that read a book with no words, and she did an amazing job, and that was Christine. So, yeah. Or with no pictures. Was it no words?
No pictures.
No pictures, okay. But Christine is a very gifted storyteller, so...
I usually go last, but Amy's going to go last today, and so I just want to say as well that thank you for everything you've done on the school board. I appreciate your advocacy for the school district, and I've also really enjoyed serving with you as a school board member and getting to know you as a person. I think you're great, and I appreciate it.
I want to start off by adding on to Caleb's. Not only did Eagle Point make their goal, it was $35,000, and he camped out in a Care Bear outfit this year.
Wow.
But yeah, that's amazing amount of dollars raised over there. Over there, excuse me. So very impressive. I just want to say thank you to everybody for all the support over the years, and every the district employees, everyone. I have, you know, I remember meeting Nancy for coffee. I'm like, I can't believe it. I don't, except when I get a puppy. I remember meeting Nancy for coffee, and she's, you know, kind of put the bug in my ear, and I was like, oh, my gosh, seriously? Like, I could never do that. And with the support of my family and friends, I did. I apologize. And I've grown so much, and I thank all of you for that, because, I mean, I was scared to go into a room with a bunch of strangers, and now I, you know, feel that I just have more confidence, and it's been just such a great learning experience in so many different ways, educationally, personally. And I've been touched by so many different people, and I just want to say thank you to everybody. And I can't believe it.
And you're going to watch our livestream every month on the first Tuesday of the month and add to our large, vast viewing audience, right? Yeah. We look forward to hearing that.
Yeah, and I actually am really looking forward to making the motion to adjourn the meeting tonight.
You want to do that, too?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn. I wish I could second it, too, but I can't. Thank you again.
Unless Amy would like to finish up here, I'll do it. Our future board meeting dates, January 15, 2019, is special meeting at 4:30 in the boardroom. January 15, 2019, is work-study session at 4:45 p.m., or immediately following the adjournment of the January 15, 2019 special meeting, room 202. And January 22, 2019, business meeting, 6:00 p.m. in the boardroom. Do you really want to adjourn the meeting?
I want to make a motion to adjourn.
Is that okay if she does that?
I can make a motion. You still adjourn it. I make the motion.
Oh, I see. Okay. So with that, let's adjourn the meeting.
Well, we have to have a second. And I can't say a...
Okay. A motion to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
A second. Okay. So...
I'm sorry, that made it really difficult.
Okay, we have a motion by...
I just wanted to make it longer.
Coburn. And second by Navy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say nay. Okay, meeting is adjourned.